All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. It's 6:30 PM. And the City Council has a quorum present at the EOC. And with that, I will let Mr. Kotay call his commission to order.
Planning and Zoning Commission has a quorum, so we'll go ahead and call Planning and Zoning Commission to order.
All right. So we'll have citizens' input as item three. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. No action can be taken by the council during citizens' input. I do have one request-to-speak form from Mr. Dave Hall. If there's anyone else from the public who wishes to speak, please grab a form. And Dave, yeah, actually, if you want to step just a little bit closer, that way we can be sure the mics pick you up. You state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, Dave Hall. Previously, I brought to your attention the retaining wall you approved, permitted, and inspected, the one which you allowed to be built in the access easement to my house at 6809 and 6811 Charlemagne, sometimes confused with 6809 and 6811 Miller. Please see Exhibit 1. That should be passed around to you now. That's the sealed survey. Your research has been inaccurate. You have set it as a non-exclusive utility easement. In addition to an easement to allow electricity and water to come to my house, it is also an ingress and egress easement. Please see the highlighted area of Exhibit 2, the warranty deed registered in Dallas County. It clearly states ingress and egress easement. Please see Exhibit 3. This came from the actual easement recorded in Dallas County. It clearly states there are two easements, first and highlighted, an ingress and egress easement, second, a utility easement. This piece of real estate served as the ingress and egress easement for C.A. Rowan, his descendants, and me for over 40 years to 6809 and 6811 Miller. Please see Exhibit 4 from the approved Miller Road widening project, sealed and released by Rallette, which includes the city constructing the drive entrance to this ingress and egress easement. In addition, a previous Rallette City Council passed an ordinance requiring me to move my kayaks between 6809 and 6917 Miller by using this ingress egress easement. How do I do this with the retaining wall building this easement and left by the developer? As stated earlier, your research has been inaccurate. If you all, which all of you, share some responsibility for this mess, if you all can't do better, then you should stop approving plans and issuing permits to build projects here in Rallette, which are negatively impacting the residents. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council and the residents, oh, and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right. Do we have anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Yep.
Oops. Yeah, if you can bring that to Debbie.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more speaker. It's Jerah Heron. Ms. Heron, if you'll state your name and city of residence. Do you want to, yeah, just step back over here. That way the mic can pick you up if you don't mind. Thank you.
My name's Jerah Heron. My husband and I live at 3409 Summer Solstice, and we also own a property at 3609 Daniel Street. It's my understanding that when the complex was built at Main Street in Olga, I think it's now called the Oasis, that the complex was built for condos for purchase. We weren't comfortable with this decision because the proposed plan allowed view access directly into our backyard. Obviously, we had to get comfortable with the decision because the complex was approved. Now that the complex is complete, we have absolutely no privacy in our backyard. The apartments on the second and third floor look directly into our backyard. And we also know that the complex is leased as apartments rather than the complex is being sold as condos. As a side note, during construction and even currently, we continue to have trash rooms, properties thrown and blown into our backyard. It appears that the city first approved a complex for Skyview at Rallette LLC as condos. Then possibly, if my analysis is correct, S5110 at Rallette SPE LLC purchased the 28 condos, and I'm now guessing that since they have bought this property, they have the right to lease the spaces as apartments rather again than selling them as condos. I'm wondering, is this correct? Is my analysis correct? And if so, is this happening to all of the condos and apartments in Rallette? And again, if so, can't the city or the P&amp;Z add stipulations to the contracts so when these developers come in and sell us West Condos, that they can't turn around and sell that property and then lease it out as apartments? You know, I think the common thing here would be that a property owner is going to take a lot better care of their property than somebody that's leasing it. So I appreciate your comments and thoughts on that. Again, it's just kind of disappointing that we keep having rental property come into the town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our work session this evening. Item 4A, receive an update regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission's statistics of cases heard, hearings held, Platts considered, and related information. And I know Mr. Hall has a presentation I think that he wants to share. Oh, by the way, our city manager, David Hall, is sick this evening. That's why he's not here with us. Christoph Bauer, deputy city manager, is sitting in with staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, to the Chair of Planning and Zoning, and members of the commission. My name is Derek Hall. I'm the Director of Community Development, and I will be presenting today on items 4A through 4D. And then afterwards, I will turn it over to my capable and able colleague, our attorney, who will make the final presentation for this evening. Anytime as we're going through the presentation, if you need for me to go back a slide, feel free to just interrupt me. Not a problem. But we'll try to get through these together. Some of these are a little short. Some of them are a little longer than others. So the first agenda item is 4A, which is to receive an update regarding Planning and Zoning Commission's statistics of cases heard, hearings held, Platts considered, and related information. I would be remiss if I didn't, before I begin the presentation, acknowledge the city secretary. She made sure that I was prepared by submitting to me the previous presentation that the previous director gave. So I had a little cheat sheet to get us through this. So as it relates to the statistics, we've broken them up into two slides. The first highlights all of the cases, a summary of the Planning and Zoning Commission's cases and actions. This first slide illustrates the time period between October 2024, which is the beginning of this current fiscal year, which ends today, through April 2025. And then, as you will see on the next slide, there's a continuation of cases that are heard from May 2025, and then P&amp;Z concluded its final meeting this fiscal year on last Tuesday. So in total, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and heard, well, reviewed 54 cases of that number. Approximately 34 of those require public hearings. I go back to the previous slide, the traditional cases that Planning and Zoning Commission will hear will be the preliminary Platts, the re-Platts, the final Platts. And those are all, as you will see in a forthcoming slide, those are all ministerial actions, meaning that the state of Texas, through its legislature, has decided that if certain conditions are met with the Platt, there is no discretionary activity for the Platt. It, in essence, has to be approved, where it is automatically approved. But in addition to the Platts, the commission also heard requests for rezonings, special use permits, major warrants. There were no framework plans that were reviewed by the commission. They also reviewed site development plans and regulating plans, tree removal permits, and text amendments. Those remaining items, as you will see in the next slide, sorry, I'll get to it, are recommended items to the city council. So again, rezoning, special use permits, Form Base Code, major warrants, tree removal permits, alternative landscape plans, and Development Code and Form Base Code amendments are all recommendations to the city council. So in this instance, the city council has the final decision. Planning and Zoning only is the recommending body. As is illustrated here, all of the Platts, including vacation Platts and re-Platts, although re-Platts do require notice, are all ministerial actions by P&amp;Z, and then alternative landscape plans and site development plans with no more than 25,000 square feet of building area, and variances to the zoning subdivision ordinance. So if I go back a little bit, again, you can kind of see just the general statistics and the summaries of all cases reviewed by P&amp;Z, a total of 54. And of that number, 34 of them were actual public hearings. Any questions?
Site development plans, when you showed on the other one, the P&amp;Z has the authority to approve site development plans. Is that also a state mandated approval, or is that the way we do it?
So it's site development plans with more than 25,000 square feet?
Right.
Yes. So anything that is above that number will then have to be referred to city council.
Okay, I wasn't reading it that way then. Okay. So if anything more than 25,000 square feet has to be, go to city council?
Right. It's considered a discretionary item.
But less than. And is that, again, is that the way that we do it, or is that, is that by?
State mandate?
No.
By mandate?
That is outlined more than likely in our ordinance, and then that's consistent with state law.
Okay, thank you.
So that very last bullet point on here should say?
Last standing.
Yeah, really.
Sorry. Yes, less than 25,000 square feet, if you're right.
Thank you.
Council or commission, any questions for staff on this presentation, statistics? Any feedback?
Well, it looks like y'all have been busy. I apologize for my tardiness to you guys in the council. But it looks like y'all have been busy, and thank you so much for your time and your effort. These are not always easy things to figure out. And I just want to say thank you for very beginning, and I'll probably wrap it up with one more.
Do we have a list of the 24 SUP zoning warrants just by, by project, by approval or denial?
Yes. So part of what we do after we have the final decision from city council, and actually probably even before, we normally will map all of the cases. And so the public can go on to our website and look at where all of the cases are that are either up for consideration or where there is an action that has been recently approved.
If I wanted to see all 24 that we've done this year, I would find that in the P&amp;Z, on the website of the P&amp;Z, or where would I actually find that?
Yes, there's a map. Now, I will say that it's not categorized by application type. It is a generalization of all of the applications where decisions have been made. So they will have, you will have SUP.
It's not, it's not project A, B, A, D.
It's not enumerated for the public. It's just a general map with all of the cases and their locations.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to 4B. Before you start your presentation on 4B, I want to point out, this is a discussion item to kind of talk about you all's performance, identify some objectives, look at your responsibilities, the things that you're responsible for, much of which we've already done kind of as a part of 4A. But I wanted to really get a chance to kind of have some face time with the commission, because we don't always get this opportunity, right? And in my time on council, it's only happened once before, and I think that was in 2022. So I really wanted to sit down with you all and kind of, again, get in front of you and just have a dialogue back and forth between the council and the commission. So we'll let Mr. Hall do his presentation, but after that, I do want to kind of go back and forth with you all as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 4B is a discussion regarding Planning and Zoning Commission's performances, or performance, objectives, and responsibilities. And this is, you know, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments. I, this is probably my fifth or sixth jurisdiction where I worked, where I've had to work closely with both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as city council. And I've always shared with both hearing bodies that you should always think of P&amp;Z as your first line of defense, kind of to the point that was said earlier. And so they're the first eyes on these particular types of projects. And, you know, in the time that I've been here, I've heard great deliberation from each and every one of the commission members. They're not afraid to ask staff questions. They're certainly not afraid to ask the applicant's questions, and they do drill down on that, on the issues that are germane to land use. So with that, I just thought it would be kind of critical to cover some basic understanding. The official name of the committee is the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are seven members with two alternates, and they're all appointed by council. Their tenure staggers two years. So every other commissioner will have staggered terms. The quorum I just learned is actually not four members, but it's four members plus one. So it's five members, I believe, Mr. Chair. Their meeting dates are the second and fourth Tuesday, and whenever special meetings are required, and they meet at City Hall at 7:00 PM. So here we have a list of our current members, and you can see their terms in which they expire. Commissioner Williams is the vice chair of the commission. We call it vice chair, right? Larry Tucker is a commissioner, Commissioner Tucker. We have Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Wilson, and then Chair Coty. We have Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Pollard, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Facet. And then we have two vacant alternate positions right now. So in working with the city secretary, we had already begun to talk about, as we enter into the new fiscal year, putting out our announcements for recruiting members who are either going to be retiring and/or for the vacant positions. And I just thought it would be kind of helpful. Certainly, since I've seen Chair Coty, he is very open and adamant and encourages the public to provide input. He wants the public to provide input. He gives them greater deal of time to provide input. And I think that's helpful in terms of making sure that we consider, you know, the comments from our public, those that will be directly impacted by any of the potential projects.
So for the, for the two commissioners that are here tonight, that your application or that your term is up at the end of the year, if you intend to reapply, make sure you get your reapplication in.
Go completely through it, right?
What's that?
Holding the application all the way, right?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there a term limit, like three, two-year terms, and then you have to sit out one, or is it as long? If you want to string them together? Does anybody know?
Yes.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think we, when we redid the handbook, Boarding Commission handbook, I thought we decided there were no term limits.
Yeah, I think the Boards and Commissions handbook has it such that there are no term limits. However, it's encouraged that you allow for some rotation. So that's kind of at you all's discretion, as well as, of course, the council's discretion as we make the appointments.
I want to ask a question. If we do resubmit our application, which I did recently, what is the process? So will we be notified at the end of the term, like December 31st?
Yes. So council will go through the reappointment process and the appointment process for new applications as well. We'll do the interview process and all of that. For reappointments, I think we'll probably maybe speak to you briefly, but I don't know that it's going to be a very in-depth interview as maybe as it has been the first time that you came on board. But we'll go through that reappointment process, just like the first round.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and to the commission, if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like we have five members whose terms will end December 31st. Commissioner Tucker, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Wise, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Facet. And then we have two vacant positions. If they're not filled before December, then they'll automatically renew once they are appointed.
We have two of those commissioners here with us today. Commissioner Wise is not here. Our two adjutant members are not here, obviously.
So as it relates to the specific responsibilities, and this is outlined in the Rallette Development Code, the duties and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission include processing and initiating zoning cases at the request of property owners and/or their representatives with respect to individual zoning cases. And again, those are a recommendation to city council, initiating zoning cases at the request or approval of city council. That would be city-initiated zoning changes, if we had any rezonings that are city-initiated. Hearings recommending and/or determining any matter related to planning and subdivision control may be specified by the specific, by this zoning ordinance or other applicable law. And that's where we get into the matters of looking at plating and anything that's contained within the subdivision ordinance, which is a subset of the Rallette Development Code, and then performing other such duties as may from time to time be assigned by the city council. An example of that would be, we have three members of Planning and Zoning Commission, that is a part of Recode Rallette. They were appointed by city council. So that would be an example of other such duties as assigned by city council. We kind of touched on this a little earlier. So consider the first items recommended body to city council. These are all discretionary items where the ultimate decision is made by city council. So rezoning, special use permits, Form Base Code, currently in our Form Base Code, major warrants. And there is a distinction within the Form Base Code where they may have minor warrants, major warrants. Minor warrants may be considered by the city manager, if he so chooses. If he defers, then those minor warrants will come to city council. All major warrants, however, and they are identified within the Form Base Code in terms of what constitutes a major warrant, must be heard at city council as the final decision maker. Tree removal permits, alternative landscape plans, and the Development Code and Form Base Code amendments. So any amendments that we're looking to do to RDC and Form Base Code will require final decision with council. What is not on here, as I look, are PDs. As you all know, planned developments are a form of zoning, specialty zoning type. Those are also heard at Planning and Zoning Commission, but they are recommended to city council for a final decision. They have approval authority for all plat types, alternative landscaping plans, properties less than an acre, and then site development plans less than 20,000 square feet. Thank you for that catch. And then variances to the subdivision ordinance. So this kind of summarizes what their specific roles are as it relates to an independent commission. Stop there.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions kind of on that before we have a dialogue here from anybody? Okay, so I'd love to have a conversation and kind of talk about any needs that you all have, feedback from the council on how you guys have been doing. But I want to preface that by saying I don't want to get into any specific zoning cases in particular. I don't want to get into the weeds on why something might have been approved, why something might have been denied, why we're asking for, you know, different conditions on things. Want to stay away from that if possible. So if we can talk about from a high level on how you all have been performing, I think that would be a really great place to start. So let me start by asking, when you all have a meeting and you're hearing a zoning case, do you feel like you're well-prepared to hear that case? Are you getting what you need in your packet? Are you getting the information you need from staff? Is the meeting flowing well? How's that working out?
I think, you know, at least from my standpoint, I think getting the, getting the package is, I think it's at the point where if we ask it for any earlier so that we have more time to look at it, then staff is kind of short-changed on it. So we usually receive it four to five days before hearings. So, you know, for most people, unless somebody else thinks so, that's enough time.
And there was a recent change to state law that requires agendas to be posted five, no, three, three business days in advance. So no longer is the Thursday evening for a Tuesday meeting posting going to happen. It has to happen, what, by Wednesday, essentially? So you're getting more of a lead time now than you would have ever gotten before, which will help, I think.
So, you know, the, I feel the, the package is prepped fairly well. And in most cases, it gives us enough time to not only go through the package, but also go and visit the, visit the site if necessary, look around, take pictures if we need to.
Commissioners, any other feedback?
I would agree with Mr. Kotay, with the exception of, and we haven't had this since I've been on, back on P&amp;Z since January. But it would be nice if, if we had four or five different items requiring especially public hearings. If you had five or more, then I'd like to have the packet a little longer out to be able to look at that. But typically, we have three, maybe four at the most. So it is plenty of time. But if we get to that point, it would be nice.
One of, one of the things that we used to have access to, which we no longer have access to, and I'm not sure who turned that off, or if it was just not passed on, but we used to be able to get to, what is the, Blue, what's the name of the?
Blue Beam.
Blue Beam, okay. Access to Blue Beam, which allowed us to kind of look at what's coming down the stream, you know? And a lot of times that lets us, even though it's not, you know, we, we need to read it with a grain of salt because it's not the final package or the final deal, but at least it gets us starting to think about what's coming.
It's a draft version of the packet, in other words?
Well, it's, well, well before that. It's when an item gets submitted, it gets into Blue Beam, because that's what the city offices use to communicate with the contractors and developers and that, you know, for information and whatnot. So you kind of see the package in its development phase.
And when did that stop happening?
I haven't been able to log on.
Is there any reason why you can't have access?
Yeah, I think, Christoph, is that, is that a conscious change that we made, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You know, Blue Beam is, is when people put in civil plans or those plans, they go into Blue Beam so that they can go through review. They are just that, they're going through review. So they are subject to change and do often change. They're basically, you know, the fire marshal, the utilities, they all go through and put comments on there. So we can certainly take a look at whether, you know, how to make that available. There are licenses that are restricted on that, and certainly could be a limiter. I haven't checked that, so take that with a grain of salt until we check on it. But we do have to buy a package of licenses. And how many licenses we have available is a question mark that I'll check on.
Okay. That's good feedback. Thank you. Anything else?
I think staff's doing an excellent job in providing us very complete packages. I appreciate all their hard work.
Glad to hear that. One thing we are going to start doing is when we have public hearings and zoning cases in particular, we've asked our city attorney, Ms. Thomas, to start attending those meetings to provide you all with a little extra legal support. I know there's been some questions during some of the cases about what can we ask, what can't we ask, what type of things can we ask of the developer? And that's where it's great to have our city attorney on site rather than relying on staff's opinion, which is not a legal opinion in the moment, to provide some, some guidance and some advice to you all, just to give you a little bit more assurance in what you're asking and what you're, what you're doing as you're conducting business.
And I'd like to add to those, the city of Rallette, their staff, their planning staff, they have done excellent jobs inside, you know. P&amp;Z, they're good with informing us from a historical perspective, if there's been any amendments on an item. It makes it, like I said, noiseless, but we can understand. It helps us on decisions that we need to make. So that can be appreciated, you know, as long as it makes it easier for us. So by providing us the information in that manner, it makes it easier for us to understand.
That's good. Thank you.
I would have one criticism. And it's not towards staff, per se, but staff has been so short in, in personnel.
But they're adding.
And they've, they've had people move in and out, being quite candid. And it's tough to get a hold of somebody sometimes because we are so short. And, uh, it's tough to get a hold of somebody sometimes because we are so short staffed in that department. So, like, you know, they're, they're just inundated at times with, uh, uh, new stuff coming in the door. And, uh, so it's, it's tough to get a hold of somebody. And, uh, and again, I want to say, I don't believe that has to do with, uh, staff per se, it's the shortage of staff.
Thank you.
And you, you call somebody, you, you call down there and you find out, oh, uh, they're not with.
They're not with us anymore.
And you go, I just talked to, I was at a meeting two days ago.
So, Mr. Hall, does, does PNC have a primary point of contact within community development?
It's shared responsibilities, partly because, you know, with having a four day work week, we have to kind of stagger when we're interacting with not only PNC, but also with the community. Um, and then it's kind of a revolving, um, target, if you will. We're processing applications, we're reading applications to get onto the agendas. Um, and for us, particularly for the planning division, we are constantly either turning and preparing staff reports for PNC or preparing staff reports for city council because oftentimes we have to do a little bit of, uh, revisions once we get to PNC to incorporate their comments. And if there are any addition, additional, um, conditions that are put in, um, and then make sure that we're able to target it. We've, because of the changes with the new state law, we've had to kind of back up our process because after, let's say for instance, after we have a PNC decision, the agenda for city council is already due the next day. So now we have to kind of push out any of our decisions by about
a month?
Or so. Because we're not able to get onto that agenda. Because we just concluded the day before the agenda, when the, when the agenda items are due, our items are PNC. So it's, it's kind of the, Victoria and I talked about it sometimes when decisions are made in Austin. Those folks making the decisions don't understand how it plays out at the local level, but it has a direct impact on how we kind of conduct business. So, you know, we have to just explain to the applicants, you know, our goal is to get your project to city council as quickly as possible, but to comply with state law to make sure that we've captured all of the comments, it's not going to be able to get placed on for the next week's agenda. So have to kind of wait two, two.
Two cycles.
Two cycles, yeah.
Four weeks.
And so staff feels, well, she would say since they are short, it appears to be short to staff. Like our previous meeting that you just held, it was errors, you know, and issues that, you know, occurred on our last PNC agenda, that I, I recognized. But overall, you know, my experience in the past two years, it was pretty good, but that probably attributed to it, you know, by there being different staff and I, an actual point person for us to reach out to for a bit.
So were those material errors, like you had to, you had to table the, table the item or?
I think we, we sent them back.
Okay.
Yeah, for correction.
Got it, okay.
So, I'm still calling, saying here, we need to make sure that we're tightening it up, that they're getting responses and their questions answered pretty quick. It's not just sitting there waiting for somebody because I, I wouldn't be happy with that. If I got work to get done and nobody's responding to me, I'd be pretty upset too. So I'd like that to get tightened up if we can get that tightened up. I don't care if it's email where it goes out to three people, one of them's going to answer, who's going to answer? Somebody's going to answer. They don't need to be waiting around for that. But I'm sorry I had to go through that, but.
Do, do you all think it would help if you had city issued email accounts or jaycote@ralat.com, twilliams@ralat.com? Would that help streamline things a bit or are you comfortable using your personal accounts?
I don't know. Do you guys answer those? No, I, I mean, I'm not sure that that would really.
I mean, from a records retention, records retention standpoint, I think that probably is a safer way to go.
That's, that's probably true. I use my personal email account and a folder just for PNC items.
And, and whether that's, I mean, it might be as simple as, as placeholder type emails, commissionerone@ralat.com, commissioner two, you know, so that there's placeholders that we can continue those email addresses and historical stuff can be there.
Well, you had to have that list to look and see who that person is.
Yeah, you might want to keep it as a name.
Change the name.
Because, you know, whenever Commissioner One rotates out, he may, he still has, he still knows Commissioner One.
That's fair.
Forgive me, um, are we talking about communication coming to us or us, our communication coming back to staff?
I think both, right? The idea being, you know, right now, you, you're told essentially, you need to keep all of your emails for X period of time because of open records requests and, and public information requests that can come through. Right now, that's in your personal email box, right? Um, I, you know, having served on a commission myself in the past, I certainly would have been appreciative of having a city issued email address where I could, at the end of my service, part ways with that email address and not ever have to worry about it again. It retains an ownership of the city, custody of the city, and they get to worry about what they might have to go back and do records requests to pull.
Okay.
Let me check. We could add it to the list of seven email addresses I currently have, so.
Oh, hey, I hear you, I hear you.
Oh, we'll give you a card with them.
One, two, three, four, five, s- oh, I only have six, I did have.
So that might be a good, um, thing for staff to look into with that. I, I don't imagine that would be terribly, terribly difficult, so.
Not complex.
Okay. Um, council, I don't want to monopolize the time with my questions. So what questions do you have for the commission? Felisa?
So last year, uh, was the first time that we did like a group training session for all of our boards and commissions. We did it last January and I just wanting feedback from you guys. Do you think that that, uh, training that we did was useful? Do you feel like you learned something? Was it, uh, were you able, the, the couple hours on a Saturday morning, was it, was it useful for you? Do you feel like it, it made your job as a commissioner, uh, clearer? Uh, you understood your role better?
I think that, um, one of the things that it definitely did was, you know, re, go ahead and refresh information for those of us who still are on boards or have been on boards, but it also gives us an opportunity to meet everybody else who's on a board, okay? And understand what they're doing for, for this, you know, for the city and, and again, allows us to answer any questions they may have of us. But, um, and I think the material that was, uh, put out was good. I mean, good solid foundation, especially for somebody who's just starting off.
Other feedback from the commission?
Just a quick question. Now, now going forward, that, that would just be required for new members. Last year was sort of the catch up for everybody.
Oh, okay.
Well, I just, I want to make sure and, and for y'all, if you're sitting there going, I got, I gotta re, I gotta re, you know, sign up, I gotta redo this, so anyway.
No, you're absolutely right. It, the, the first one was for everyone. I don't think we would turn you away if you wanted to come back. But I, I just wanted to make sure that it was, uh, it was a valuable resource that that was something that we took, needed to do for new members.
Mr. Hernandez?
The only, uh, um, if I remember correctly, I think this meeting was rescheduled once. Um, that training was rescheduled one time, so I was unable to attend it. Uh, it ended up becoming where I was out of town that day. Uh, it would have been nice to have had that online or somewhere we could have accessed it again because I, I actually really wanted to, to hear what was going to be presented and I, I've never been able to catch up with that.
I think we had intended to record it.
I think maybe we had a technical.
Yeah, we, I think we had a technical issue within it. The recording did not save or something. So that was the intent.
You're welcome to come this year.
Yeah, you're right. We did reschedule it because of the ice storm.
That's right. Mr. Pollard?
I will give you a perspective from an old commissioner that, that came back to the commission, and I thought it was really good. Uh, there was some, some catch ups things that, in the years that I had been off the commission, that, uh, Ms. Thomas brought out that had changed in the law and things that, that, uh, that was a good refresh of Johnson's.
That's good feedback. Council, other questions?
I, I just want to give a real quick comment, you know, I'm, we're refreshing here, but uh, watching, and I've watched some of y'all's stuff and we've had, uh, meetings to see how what y'all done on it, how it was, how it went and everything. I've been really impressed. I think y'all did a very good job, very professional. I've actually had two people that's went before y'all, told me how, how easy it was and how open y'all were and then very, uh, opening here in their side and it seemed like you were helping, trying to help the citizens too. So I appreciate all that you have been doing and, uh, I know a few of you on the board and I know that y'all, y'all got some good, uh, some good heads on there that knows what's going on and how to do it. And I really do appreciate it because, uh, it makes our job easier when it comes to us too.
And I was gonna, uh, definitely echo the sentiments of Councilmember Gibbs. I, being a new councilperson, your recommendations, the objective nature of how you guys look at things, um, definitely has made it a lot easier for me to go through recommendations and understanding how we're going to collectively move the city forward. So I appreciate everything you guys do.
Very good job.
And I don't know about the, the rest of the commission. I certainly have no problems if the council member wanted to call me up and say, gee, Pollard, what, what were you thinking? What, what did you do? Why did you do this? Why didn't you do that?
And you've never shied away from sharing your opinion. We appreciate it.
And Stanley, kind of on that note then, and I was sort of thinking about this, uh, I think recently we had a couple items that have come to council where, uh, PNC approved and then they were, uh, not approved by council. Is there any value in reviewing those or looking at that or is that not really how the process goes?
I was, yeah. I actually underline performance just because I was thinking, so what is our score? What is our grade? You know, how often have we made the right call? Not necessarily the right call or wrong call, but how many times have we provided, you know, the?
But, yeah, is there value in, in doing a postmortem?
I believe, I believe there is. I believe there is.
And, and I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a right call or a wrong call. I, I respect y'all because you're getting the information to make the best decision possible. When it comes to us, we have to do the same thing.
Right.
And, and sometimes we, a lot of times I think I, we tend to agree with the, the commission. There are times when we don't, but it's, it's kind of our perspective and our viewpoint. But no, no right or wrong. I, I want you, I want you to deliberate and vote as you see it.
Well, on that note though, would it be helpful just when we deliberate, you know, like we've had downtown, downtown strategic planning that if you've watched council meetings, you've seen it, but if you don't watch it, then you wouldn't see what that is. Would it be helpful for y'all to kind of see the priorities of what we want and sort of the vision of where we're going? Not to say that you have to go along, everyone needs their own perspective and that's what you're there for, but at least to kind of have an idea of sort of the north star where we're trying to get, get to so, uh, that when you're thinking of, you know, projects coming in, you kind of have context for how that fits in with the overall future of Ralat. Would that, would that be helpful?
I think, I think that would be extremely helpful because, you know, there are, and we've had, in fact, just recently, one where, uh, PNC was pretty much split on it. It was the, um, in fact, Mr. Gibbs, um, wasn't real happy with it because of the way the road went through the.
Let's not get too much into specifics.
But what that, what that does is that type of, now how can, how can I pull that back?
A case like that.
A case, a case that fits what is in the strategic plan, okay, that may have some need to polish, okay? To have your ideas on what that is would help us to be able to kind of guide that to the right direction.
Without, without getting into detail, but as an example, if I can, uh, one that recently came up was Bricks Plus.
Yeah, let's not, let's not.
And I don't want to talk about it specifically other than.
Look at the lawyer, look at the lawyer.
Strategic, strategic plan. It, it may have made sense on one, but if you look at, at Lakeview Development from one end to the other, lo- you know, writ large is what I'm saying, not a specific plan. That's sort of what Jonathan's talking about.
And I can understand, you know, that was one that I was like, well, hmm, because I look at it from the standpoint of somebody comes in with a pocket full of money.
Sure, I get, I get.
And they do their research.
I get it.
And they, they look at what's available or what they can do or what they can't do. And to come in and say, hey, I want to put a convenience store, okay? On this piece of property and for, for us to shoot them down and say, well, no, you can't do a convenience store because we already have three or four. His business plan, I would hope, if not, I guess, you know, he's going to lose a lot of money, but I, I would think that his business plan had already taken into consideration the distance and the volume of business and all the rest of that. So I have a hard time saying, no, you can't.
I absolutely get it, but it kind of goes with Jonathan was talking about, of, of sort of that more strategic visionary, you know, what as a city we want and how, how PNC, because to your point, you're exactly right. I mean, I exactly, you know, I get it. They, you know, business wants to move here, they got money, it's a, it's a going concern. I certainly get it, but that looking at it more in that holistic sort of sense of, you know, particularly just say Lakeview Parkway from end to end, which I consider really prime real estate.
Well, let, let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's separate the concept here because what, what we're really talking about, you all's responsibility is, is the objective lens through which you have to look. We have the benefit of the subjective lens that we get to look through, right? So we really have different lenses. And so I think what we're asking from you all and, and what my ask specifically would be of this group is to make sure that you're looking at things really through that objective lens, right? Look at the request on its face. Don't push back so much on individual components and try to work with the developer and this, that and the other. If it, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If you want to make a, make an adjustment and make a recommendation that it's approved with conditions, great. Try to stay away from the negotiation if at all you can, because we really want to hear from you, uh, an opinion that's unadulterated by a developer's feeding into whatever your opinion might be. Let us handle and deal with their, uh, uh, the way that they massage developments to get them pushed through, right? Let us, let us deal with that. We would really, I think, at least I would, really prefer to hear your unfiltered opinion about what you think about a development. The answer's no. Just say no. You don't have to say no because.
Right.
I mean, the thing about, the thing about our comprehensive plan and our future land use map and the existing zoning on a site means that at some point in the city's past, one city council or another decided that zoning is the best use for that piece of property. So you don't have to justify why you think it's not right. Somebody already did that for you. Some other city council member said, this is what we think the zoning should be. You can simply say no and that's okay. Now, if you choose to say yes or you choose to recommend that the zoning get changed or an especially use permit get changed, feel free to add, you know, character into why you think that's right, because we would love that opinion. We would love that perspective. And I think that's when you're looking at what is the highest and best use of a particular site. It might not be the existing zoning of a C2. It might be a planned development. That might be what makes the most sense. But feel free, when you're ready to say no, to just say no. Not back it up with a whole bunch of commentary because that's where developers, in particular that those, especially with the deep pockets that want to come after a city like us, would be more than happy to say, well, they're just discriminating against me for one reason or another. If it doesn't fall within the, if, within the topics of reasons that we can deny something, inconsistency with our comp plan, adverse impact on surrounding properties, infrastructure limitations, failure to promote the public's health, safety and welfare, uh, if it, if it appears to be spot zoning or if it's non-compliance with zoning standards. If it doesn't really meet one of those things, then you can just simply say no if it's your own personal opinion that you don't think it works for, for, for a site.
But also in saying those things, when a business owner, a developer comes and we've actually established that being the appropriate zone for that appropriate piece of property, that's when you get into a sticky situation because of the inconsistency. And I mean, I know most cities face that, but how can I say, when you say, well, we could just say no or just say yes? Or when somebody comes and at least they documented and they've taken the appropriate measures to come before PNC, uh, to mean, we should explain. Because if they've done what they need to do, because some people don't, they, you know, don't come with presentations and it's kind of sloppy, I wouldn't advocate for somebody like that. But if they take out the time and we've actually said, well, hey, this is our tool, whatever that particular property is owned as, it should be taken, you know, not really with a grain of salt, just saying, hey, we're going to look at this and consider it, because they have taken appropriate measures to be zoned in that particular area and have taken out the time to actually, you know, follow those protocols, whatever those measures may be. Um, you know, on that end, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah. And, and I, I, I do appreciate that perspective because I, I think that's totally fair. And I would never tell you to not share your opinion, um, to a developer or anybody else that you're talking to while you're sitting at the dais. What I will say is there is a fine line between what What I will say is there is a fine line between what you can and should say and what you definitely should not say. And I'll give you an example that I heard from another mayor. His planning and zoning, actually it was someone on his city council, excuse me. Um, there was a zoning request for a daycare. This is in another city, to be perfectly clear. There was a zoning request for a daycare. Now, there's already a series of daycares in this town. Uh, but this particular daycare had come forth and, and what do developers do? They love to talk about not just, we want to rezone to a daycare and here's the specs of the building, that kind of thing. They want to talk about what they do, what they bring to the community. And so what this particular daycare would bring to the community would be this learning curriculum that's amazing and special and it's in Spanish and it caters to a different kind of clientele. And one of the council members said, this is going to be a Spanish speaking daycare. That is not a reason to dismiss a zoning case and it certainly does not fall within bounds of a reason to vote no. And as soon as you open your mouth and you say that, you introduce bias into the conversation that didn't exist previously. Now, if you want to say that the, the road in front of the building is not consistent, doesn't allow for proper turning for ingress and egress, especially at peak times. If you want to talk about the fact that it's a daycare next to a liquor store and that's not appropriate, great. All of those are very legitimate things to talk about. It's when you get into that very gray area and you start to talk about things that are very much out of bounds, you can really step into it. Yeah.
A lot of people do that. They get away from what's relevant and it has nothing to do with why you should approve or disapprove an item.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah. And to the mayor's point, I think some of us have, have had to learn that with good wise legal counsel. Sometimes the best, the best response is simply let your yes be yes and you know, know without the kind of articulation itself.
That's true.
I, I would just like to, to say I appreciate the, the, that side of the, the table. And the response there that.
What about this side?
But you know, I, I do appreciate because of the uh, strategic part of it. Because uh, although we're two independent bodies to look at something like this and what we look at is not dependent on what you guys are gonna do. But it is nice to kind of have an idea of why did that? Why did we unanimously say this and they unanimously said?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, and again, it is the vision for the city, you know, so we, we all need to know what that is.
And it might be time for a comp plan update. Our comp plan maybe needs some tweaking, so.
I would say so.
Twenty.
Twenty eighteen. Yeah, we're seven years in, so.
Sorry.
Nineteen.
I think Sammy brought it up recently, actually.
So there, there's, we, we certainly live in a different world post pandemic. I think the types of businesses and things like that have dramatically changed and it might be time for an update there.
It's been a lot too since then.
Counsel, what other questions do you have for the commissioner or commissioners? If you have questions for us, this is very much an open dialogue, so feel free to share. Wow, really?
And, and Mayor, I do appreciate your comment that if you guys were, were fine with just saying no because sometimes I do say no, but.
Yeah. Yeah. And we want, um, you know, we, we try to, we have unofficial betting on how long our meetings will go, right? Non, non-monetary betting as far as how our meetings will go. So, you know, if, if you all are feeling like your meetings are running a little bit long, maybe take that into consideration when you're sharing comments as well. Give that some thought. It's your time. You're more than welcome to invest as much or as little as you choose. Uh, I do want to point out Commissioner White also uh, arrived um, kind of during that dialogue as well. So thank you for being here.
One thing y'all did bring up that I, and I think is important to recognize and it's certainly the, for, for me, the, the hard part of it is there does have to be a certain objectivity from your side of it that, that maybe we don't have to be that objective. And so for everything that's being said, I think it's still important to maintain that objectivity because that's at the end of the day, really what you're kind of tasked with.
When we say no, it's ninety-nine percent chance it's gonna wind up in your lap. But if you've got something we don't have to, you have the one final authority, of course, but the political, you also know other things that's going on in the background financially and other things that we are not privy to.
I, I do want to mention one thing also, a kind of a special power that you all have that you may not realize is that in zoning cases, if you deny a request that requires a super majority by the council to overturn that request. So you do have that kind of unique, uh, sorry?
If they deny by three fourths.
If you deny by three.
Actually, I thought it was, I thought it was originally if we denied unanimously, it required a super majority. So three quarters?
Now, if they approve and we, if they approve by simple majority and we want to deny, do we still have to have super majority? No. Okay. That, that was, I'm glad you brought that up because I was still a little unclear.
It's just in overturning their decision, their recommendation, I should say.
So when we get our packages and stuff and we got something that's coming for us with y'all, y'all's, uh, there's a link always to that, that, that meeting. So I'll watch that and I'm listening to what all y'all got to say and I'm sitting here on y'all's side of it. And I'm also seeing, you know, that there's difference opinions on everything and there's difference opinions up here too. And we don't always agree either, but it, y'all bring a good perspective to the thing. Y'all are doing a good job. I mean.
Absolutely.
All the way.
Yeah. And you do a good job. Like I said, I listen to him and I always think, man, I wasn't smart enough to ask that question. He's really good there, so.
Yeah. I listen to your meetings as well, but you all have a very much higher pitched voice because I'm listening at two times the speed. So everybody sounds like a mouse, but that's okay.
I do a little and a half, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone before we move on to item four C? All right. Mr. Hull, if you'll take us through item four C, a RECODE update. And actually, let me go ahead and, sorry, let me read all these items under the record because I don't think we did that. So item four B was discussion regarding planning and zoning commission's performance objectives and responsibilities. Item four C is to receive an update on the RECODE Rallette Committee's progress, next steps and anticipated completion of work. Item four D will be to update from staff regarding continuing education opportunities for commissioners as well as required attendance at such opportunities. And then our last item will be item four E legislative update on HB twenty-four and land use. Go ahead. Thank you.
So as I go through four C, I see seven individuals in this room that could probably give this presentation. So let me first begin by acknowledging council member Reeves, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Schup and who is the other member? Was it just two, two on, two from city council, uh, Chairman Koti, uh, Commissioner Pollard and Commissioner Williams and then of course Deputy City Manager Bow.
And also sitting back here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry. And we have two other commissioners. I, I don't have the names in front of me, so I can't read them. You guys gotta give your names. And.
Mark Damri.
Okay. So there we go. So how many is that now? Eight people potentially that can give this presentation? So just by way of a little bit of background, uh, this process was initiated RECODE Rallette, which uh, was the vision of city council at the time to initiate a process to review the zoning and development regulations in twenty twenty-two. And initially there was a consultant that was brought on Clarion that was tasked to complete this reimagining of the zoning ordinance. In short, and for the public, we have two ordinances that governs zoning in the city. We have the Rallette Development Code, which is the traditional ordinance that we've had some time since we started doing zoning activities in the city. And then at some point in two thousand, probably latter part of past two thousand ten or so, the city engaged in a form-based code zoning ordinance that kind of looked at more density-based zoning, um, as opposed to the traditional type of zoning that we have. Um, and so as a result of this, as we began to try and implement two conflicting at times uh, ordinances, we began to hear complaints from the development community. We ourselves, meaning staff, uh, planning and zoning, city council was confused in terms of which to listen, what to follow, you know, how do we apply? Um, and so kind of born from the, from those issues was this need to try um, and pro- provide some clarity to what is gonna govern as it relates to zoning. So as it relates to the initial task that was completed by Clarion, the assessment and recommendations were not necessarily aligned with at that time, the council's policy decision. And so there was a second effort, which occurred February twenty fifteen, or twenty twenty-five, um, that provided specific and additional dis- direction on the process of finalizing the proposed zoning and development code amendments and the scope of work. I, I think that was critical from the city manager's perspective, making sure that we could, the staff, this, the management team could drill down on what the real critical issues were and to understand exactly what the directive was from city council. From there, from there, uh, RECODE convenience first meeting, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, primarily to establish the objectives, the goals, the planning principles and to offer comparison of density-based zoning versus the current zoning practices, which is included in the Rallette Development Code. Since that first meeting, we've had eight meetings. And primarily we've conducted these meetings by examining and offering recommendations for all residential and commercial zoning districts. Critical to this exercise is making sure that we have a purpose statement. In any zoning ordinance, whenever you're introducing a zoning district, you always have an intent or a purpose statement. And so, and in this instance, as you will see in some of the preceding slides, um, that we were intentional in terms of really trying to capture the essence of what the intent of the zoning district is by creating um, a purpose statement. Uh, so the, there were clear objectives. The project goes uh, primarily to eliminate form-based code zoning and related development regulations and create a functional code which can easily be enhanced in the future, meaning we can expand upon it later on, but at least try to correct this inconsistency between two codes and then establish a basic zoning ordinance that is simple to enforce and does not create obstacles to realize compatible and cohesive development. And I can't state this enough, you know, I have the pleasure of serving as Director of Community Development. So I also oversee code enforcement. Code enforcement division is probably um, the most visible division with an all of community development. And it's one thing to go, take the applicants, take the commission and the council through these land use processes, but it's another thing after they're approved and then we have to enforce the codes. Because we have form-based code and we have Rallette Development Code, the code enforcement officers are oftentimes in a quandary because they're having to figure out and go through and apply whatever development regulations are applicable to that particular location. And it can be very confusing. Some things are literally across the street. They may be in form-based code versus RECODE Rallette Development Code. And so this overall objective helps, will help us to achieve a unified zoning ordinance that will take into account those things that are currently, you know, built, that are existing, and then those things that are gonna come that are gonna enhance our future. So this, this RECODE objective, it, it's kind of what guides us every time the RECODE committee meets and we kind of discuss this as a means of making sure that we're on task. Uh, this is Kristoff's favorite slide. It's called the planning process. It's at least two steps. So if you've heard of him talk about RECODE Rallette, he's very passionate about talking about the toolbox and, and it makes a lot of sense. You know, we want our developers to have flexibility, but flexibility within a defined toolbox. Here are the things that you can pull from. Um, and then if all else fails, you have planned development, right? But you know, here's the toolbox which is gonna guide you and guide the city in orderly um, development for our city. And so then, you know, as a part of that two step, two, two-step process, picking the tools to use and where the city can use it is gonna be critical. Now, we have to, as a community that's continuing to grow, as a community that's, that's experiencing redevelopment, we have to always deal with the issue of non-conforming uses. It doesn't matter if it's Rallette, if it's Dallas, if it's Fort, Fort Worth, if it's Austin. Every jurisdiction is going to always have non-conforming uses. If anyone tells you that they've written a zoning ordinance where they've dealt with all non-conforming uses, they have told you wrong because that cannot be achieved. You're gonna always, by virtue of the fact that you have development in the built environment, you're gonna always have non-conforming uses. But applying the toolbox to existing uses helps this mismatch, um, and then this legal non-conforming uses. So uses continue if they were legal at the time that they were established. They have a legal non-conforming status. Um, however, they can't be expanded. They can't be intensified. Uh, they can't, they can be rebuilt if initiated within one year. Uh, and then the vesting expires because typically for a particular type of non-conforming use, there's a vesting period for which the discontinued use will come to, come to pass. So the overall goal is to minimize legal non-conforming uses. Um, and that's a goal. Um, you know, we can't say it's the standard because we know that we're gonna always have them. But to the extent that we can have the flexibility built into this RECODE Rallette process, we're gonna try to minimize the legal non-conforming uses where we can. So let's take you back to where we started. We kind of talked about it a little bit in the background, but this, this slide kind of gives you an example. So in the Rallette Development Code, if we just look at residential zoning districts, the city has twelve. Now, I don't have it on this slide. You'll see it on the next slide when we get to non-residential. But in some of these cases, we have sometimes five and ten properties that have a single zoning of something like this. Maybe a little more in residential, but certainly in non-residential. And you, you know, you kind of ask yourself, we have all of these residential zoning districts for an array of different property types, property sizes. You see SF forty, one acre, all the way down to multifamily, uh, U, which is for downtown only. So that's just twelve residential zoning districts in the RDC. Then you flip over to the form-based code, you have two that are strictly residential, new neighborhood and rural neighborhood. So you can begin to see kind of the complexity of what developers go through as they're thinking through. Or maybe even a simple mom and pop that wants to subdivide their one acre lot into maybe half acres. Um, it's not kind of cut and dry for them to kind of understand the process. Moving on to our non-residential zoning districts. So we just discussed twelve residential zoning districts. On top of that, we have thirteen non-residential zoning districts. So if you keep in count, that's twenty-five. Now, mind you, our city is just over twenty square miles, almost twenty-one square miles. So we have twenty-five zoning districts for a city our size. Plus an additional five, we have three non-residential zoning districts in form-based code. Now, in this slide, you see, we've tried to kind of illustrate to you, for instance, for in the, in the Rallette Development Code, as it relates to limited office, we identified four properties that had that zoning district. For O two, we identified one property. It was a church. This is general office. So as the committee has been engaged in their due diligence and kind of looking at historically what we have, they've kind of considered, you know, is there the possibility to consolidate some of these zoning districts? And so they've taken that into account. They've uh, reworked the purpose statements. Um, and we'll get into a couple of examples now. So this is where we've been. So uh, the committee members can tell you, you know, we traditionally try to get them information ahead of time. Staff will look through what's currently either in the RDC or the form-based code. And then we will develop, you know, a purpose statement that kind of derives from both of them. And it's the intent. So for an example, we looked at low den, no, low, medium density residential. And this is comprised of, we're proposing it to be comprised of three zoning districts currently. Single family eight and single family seven in the RDC and urban neighborhood in the form-based code. And basically the intent states, the statement says, the district is intended for low to medium density residential development and accommodate single family detached and attached dwelling clusters around common open space used as buffers between districts and housing types. We include lot dimensions, we include setbacks and we include building standards. And this is just to start the conversation. Um, we opened it up to the committee members and they deliberate amongst themselves. And I mean, you know, if I were a developer, I would be intimidated hearing some of the things that these, these ladies and gentlemen say in the meeting. Uh, they're on point in terms of thinking about what exists, um, what they want this community to have. Um, and they really provide, you know, substantive detail in terms of looking at what exists currently. Looking at what exists currently in the community and what we want to have in the future.
I think it.
Go ahead, sir.
I think it's important to mention that essentially what we have done with the R five. Is um, taking those twelve, thirteen, fourteen different zoning. Um, districts and windle that down to five. Okay, so it's a lot easier to say, okay, I want to choose this one versus who knows what.
That's right. So this, I won't go through this one in detail, but this is the example that the chairman is talking about. So R five medium to high density residential, and the reality is, you know. At staff, we hear it, as elected officials, you hear it as appointed commissioners, you hear it, you know, the. The discussion around density, or as I call it, residential intensity. Um, however you look at it, the intent is, we have it, we have to have a zoning district that accommodates it. We can't, you know, say that we're gonna update our zoning ordinance and not respect what's currently on the ground. And built in the physical environment, so. You know, part of what, you know, as the chairman mentioned, is looking at these different types of existing zoning districts. And whittling them down, consolidating them to make sure that they can still capture the essence of the neighborhood. Um, of that built environment that we have, uh, and so forth and so on. So, where are we going? So in addition to going through all of the zoning districts within both codes. Um, we're also, we've been, we understand that the charge has been looking at the tree uh, preservation ordinance. Um, if you recall, there are areas of conflicting development standards, so. When it comes to tree preservation, it's handled differently in form based code versus and Rallette Development Code. And since we're collapsing and combining. Um, and, and basically trying to do away with form based code, we have to figure out. How are we gonna deal with these areas of conflict as it relates to development standards, so. That's gonna be a task that we'll be taking on in another month or so. And then the traditional or the transitional use standards, so making sure that we respect. We kind of heard some comments from the person before and understanding that, you know, people already have their properties. And if there is some adjacent development, is there gonna be some compromise in them enjoying their properties? Because now someone is adjacent to their properties. Um, and so just understanding the appropriate transitional uses with the existing. Built environment versus those things that are gonna come, uh, moving forward. Development that's gonna come to the city. So I'll wrap this up by talking about next steps, so. Um, immediately, we're gonna start reviewing the remaining districts, we've gone through all residential and commercial. So what we have for Rallette Development Code includes our institutional uses, our special use permits, our planned developments. Um, and then in the form based code, we have urban, village, and commercial center. We should wrap these up, um, if we continue to meet on our regular schedule by late October, early November. Um, part of this activity, after we move forward with these reimagined zoning districts. Is also, also to look at our zoning map, that's a critical part of what we have to do. So look at the zoning map and then, you know, and make the proposed changes as needed. Uh, but we're also gonna look at and make recommendations to the use table, so it's kind of a one, two process. You have your zoning, or one, two, three process, you have your zoning district, you have your zoning map, and you also have your use table. That kind of provides you with guidance in terms of those uses that are permitted by right. Um, or permitted maybe through our SGP or through some other mechanism. Um, we mentioned transitional standards, um, and then areas of conflicting development requirements. And that will wrap up kind of most of the remaining activities along with um, the tree preservation ordinance and those activities. By state law, if we're gonna change zoning, we have to have community meetings and we try to bake that into the process. So to comply with state law, we will be rolling this out. And whenever you're undertaking this type of activity, even before you get to the public hearing, it's always advisable to talk to the community first. Um, you know, if, if I come knocking on your door, you get a, a notice from me saying, we're proposing to change your zoning. I'm gonna get a call. Kristoff is gonna get a call. Victoria's gonna get a call, the mayor's gonna get a call, and so. You know, the appropriate thing to do is to get out in front of that, have a conversation about why we're doing this. You know, we have two conflicting ordinances, we're trying to simplify things, not only for, you know, the resident. But for the, the development community as well, and for the general, and for the city in general. Just making sure that we can kind of clearly understand how to apply the ordinance, um, in that manner. And then finally, we will hold a public hearing, and Victoria, I didn't have a conversation with you, but I'm thinking. We would probably need to have a public hearing at both PNZ and City Council. So, um, this uh, meeting, Mr. Mayor, is apropos because we will need to bring. The uh, recode recommendations to PNZ first before coming to City Council.
Is the uh, end of twenty twenty five a self imposed deadline, or does that have statutory?
Self imposed, yeah, but it helps us to stay on track, right? You know, David has given the charge to Kristoff, Kristoff has given the charge to me, and so we are adamant about. We think that, you know, if we can keep, you know, the flow of the meetings have been going great. Um, you know, we've gotten through the most difficult part in terms of tackling most of the zoning districts. You know, when we start to talk through some transitional standards and some of the other development requirements. You know, that might get into a little bit of a lengthy discussion, but we can kind of, you know, uh, manage that appropriately. But this, this slide provides you kind of with the schedule, so project initiation was in, you know, well, we should say. Uh, Rico Rallette two. Second edition, uh, started uh, April twenty twenty five. Going through our, our zoning district base, baselines and our zoning considerations. Then, you know, refine it through our purpose statements, our design and dimension standards. Our zoning map analysis and our additional discussions with some of those other activities we discussed, our final recommendations. And then, of course, we have to go through ordinance refinement, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, okay. We've had you here for almost nine months. Um, and, you know. Is there, you know, do we have any heartburn with any of this before we start to really take this out to the community, before we hear it? At the public hearing bodies, um, and that's that internal deliberation that I imagine that recode is gonna do. And then that'll take us to our community meetings and then our, our public hearings.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
I would like to request that your presentation slides, can you send those electronically to all the members of Recode?
Absolutely, happy to do so. Okay, so that concludes that discussion.
Yeah, so council or the commission, any questions on recode in particular? Not too much down into the detail of the specifics of recode, because we have a committee that's working on that, but if there's any high level questions about the process or. What we might expect to see, I think those would be very appropriate. Anybody?
I know we've had some concerns from a couple members of our community that I've seen, especially when we were talking about the residential zoning as it relates to multifamily. I think it's important for people to realize that you have to look at each of those zoning categories and classes. We can't just ignore one because we think that maybe shouldn't be here. Um, each, each of those zoning types needs to exist in some capacity, and so whether or not that zoning ever gets used is. Kind of irrelevant, it needs to be available within our code, otherwise we're having to rewrite our code at some point in the future. If the tides change, um, and that's one thing that I appreciate that you all worked through. Particularly with the uh, the drone delivery situation, right, there was the, the drone hub. Um, that was a totally new self initiated zoning class that we put together and, and ran through both. Uh, the commission and the council, and so that's just one example of code refinements that happen over time.
So we've mentioned what you did, I think Kristoff came up with the toolbox, and that's what the toolbox is for, is. Throw all that, that in there.
Yeah, cuz you don't wanna be using a wrench as your hammer.
Exactly, I mean, that's what we're doing now, we're, we're. Everything turns into a PD because we don't have the right tools in the toolbox to make things happen. All right, are there any other questions about recode? Let me just.
I just wanted to, um, one thing on the point that you made about, you know, having to have a multifamily zone, and that's about that nonconformity issue.
Right.
We have multifamily in the community, it's, we have to, we really should zone it as it is. So that it is a conforming use, and that's why we have those tools to apply to the built environment out there, as you said. You may never use it again, but we'll use it in this case to apply it to the existing, uh.
And, and the recode process is not a revision of the comp plan, that's not what's happening here, that's not what's being undertaken, so when we talk about the comp plan. Comp plan and the future land use map, those are processes that are undertaken totally separate from what you all are working on. And I do want to commend everybody who is serving on the recode committee, Mr. Reeves, Mr. Shu. Uh, Ms. Williams, Mr. Cote, Mr. Pollard, Ms. McKee, Mr. Damaron. You all are doing tremendous work and it's a thankless job and we appreciate you, so thank you for stepping up to the plate. Anything else on recode? All right, let's move on to, where are we at, four D?
Yes.
So educational opportunities, Mr. Hall, are you gonna take this one?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So update from staff regarding continuing education opportunities for commissioners as well as required attendance at such opportunities, so. I, I would say, first of all, I don't normally like to shout out City Council, but I will say. I was very impressed as a new employee, when you um, received from the commission their request for fifteen thousand dollars. Again, I've worked, it's probably my fifth or sixth community, um, and I've always felt strong, staff will tell you, I'm very adamant about training. Um, continuing education, and without any hesitation, this council, this council before me. Um, was happy first that we had put together. Um, that the commission had come forward with a request for fifteen thousand dollars and expressed a desire to attend some training. Um, but was also happy that we were able to provide some recommendations, so kudos to you, City Council. Um, I've worked with many and not many have, have, would have been as generous, shall I say, as you, so. With that said, we were able to, right away, based upon this current fiscal year's budget. We were able to send three of our members to the twenty twenty five elected and appointed officials workshop. So this occurred in, um, July of this year. It was in North Richland Hills, I'm not sure, commissioners, can you raise your hand if you attended, I know there was at least three of you all. Um, probably one more, but, um, and, yes, our Rico Rallette member was also there. Um, and so, great information. I wasn't there, so I can't tell you exactly what was discussed, um.
Well, I'll tell you, that was probably one of the better. Uh, lectures to go to. Um, and in fact, I'd recommend it to all of you guys, because like it says, elected and appointed officials. It was very well put together.
And so then, moving into the next training opportunity for the commissioners. The um, annual American Planning Association Texas Chapter Conference, it's gonna be occurring in College Station. We, not only do we have one member that'll be attending, we have one member that'll be presenting, one of our commissioners will be presenting, she is not here tonight. Commissioner Wise?
Wise, yes.
Yeah, Wise, uh, will actually be a presenter at the conference, um, and we've extended. I, I think a number of commissioners have mentioned that this timeframe conflicts, they already have some travel planned, so we would have had more to attend, but we do have one that's confirmed. Um, and then, I found some additional training from our COG, so there's. Planning and zoning training that is gonna be offered, registration won't open until January. Um, but it's just traditional one on one planning and zoning training, it's gonna be July ninth and tenth. Um, and as soon as the registration opens, we'll send a notice out to uh, the commissioners and then. You know, we'll have money in the budget, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, so, you know, we'll have money in the budget to send as many want to attend as possible. Um, and Mr. Mayor, and council, I do want to mention. And I've had a general conversation with our city manager, I think I've had some conversations with the city attorney. Um, we will also, and when I say we, um, the city management, our city attorney, we've discussed doing some in-house training. And one example is kind of what you heard from, you know, the resident that mentioned earlier, and Victoria and I joke about this a lot. In our land use sidebars that we have. Oftentimes, staff may be asked by the commission, by the council, by the public. Even if a particular project is rental or for sale, if it's market rate. And there are appropriate responses, you know. Respectfully, Mr. Mayor or Council or Commissioner, that is not a land use consideration, so as it relates to land use. We have no opinion of that, that is something that you may need to ask the applicant, that is not for any land use consideration. And that's kind of the, the bottom line, but we heard tonight, you know, you know, rightfully so, a person that's. You know, a developer may have said that they were gonna build a condo development and then now it's rental. That has no control as it relates to land use, it's not codified in any state law, and so. In essence, it should not be a decision, um, it should not be a factor in considering your decision. And so, if you hear staff probably not providing an opinion on it, it's because we can't, quite frankly. It's not codified in our ordinance, nor is it codified in law, but those are the types of things that I think. You know, from a training perspective, and I think the commissioners kind of know that, but we can also talk through those items. What can be considered and what should not be considered.
Well, to be honest with you, when I first got on planning and zoning, we used to have work sessions prior to. Our PNZ hearings, and during those work sessions, we took the opportunity to have training. Which has gone by the wayside, and I think that's a huge disappointment. Um, at least I feel it's something that we should be getting back into.
Uh, Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Wasn't there some training that's available online?
Yes, and there's gonna be some, I failed to uh, include that, there will be some training opportunities. That I will send out, um, probably within another two months, it'll be available, um, that'll be online.
And that's, that's probably will do that.
Yes.
So Mr. Cote is chair, I would encourage you, if you feel there's value in that, having those work sessions where there's training. Work with staff and, and request those special meetings that you all can. Either come early before a meeting, an hour early and have a sit down with staff or the day before or. Off week or whatever, whatever makes sense.
Usually forty five minutes to an hour before the meeting, we'd sit down and have a work session.
I think that's very appropriate, and, and the training that they are planning might either supplement or replace what you're suggesting, the, the in-house training. Um, but I, I, I would love for you all to have as much information as you can when you're making decisions rather than. Operating blind or in, in a vacuum of information. I think it's so important, and I think that's why the council suggested that. That additional funding was absolutely appropriate to ensure that you all are educated, empowered. Uh, to be able to make those decisions.
I haven't been disappointed in any of the training that I've gone to so far, so.
That's good, I'm glad to hear the feedback about the, um, the first one that you went to. There's a reason we're a part of TML and the NCT COG and North Texas Commission, I mean, we, we are members of those organizations. Because they provide resources for cities to be able to operate and function effectively. Mr. Hall, anything else? All right, so would, would not only encourage, but. Kind of mandate that you all attend some of these trainings, like we realize that you may not be able to attend all of them, the travel schedules and different things are gonna conflict, but. Um, please make every effort to attend those trainings.
I think in the um, handbook that Elsa revised, it's mandated that we have training.
Yeah, that's the boards and commissions training in particular.
Right.
Now, is, do you remember if it has specific training for planning and zoning or board of adjustments? So, no specific training there, but there is a board of, uh, boards and commissions training that happens every year. And that's the one that happened back in February, I think it was. And, and there will be another one of those, but if you've already attended, you don't have to re-attend, only for new appointments. Or if you weren't able to make the original one, Mr. Hernandez. There you go. It, it is a great opportunity to network with other volunteers in the city, I will say that. All right, any other questions on the educational piece? All right, our last item, item four E is to talk about uh, HB twenty four and land use, Victoria.
Thank you. And this is mostly uh, stuff that staff will handle, but I still thought, thought it was a good idea. Just for council and PNZ to just kind of hear, you know, how the law has changed recently, so you'll kind of know, you know. What staff is doing differently and how it might impact your, uh, what you're considering. So House Bill twenty two made a lot of changes in chapter two eleven of the local government code. For one thing, it added a definition of a proposed comprehensive zoning change. And that means it can be one of three things, and they're here, I'm just going to read them. It means it's a city proposal to be one of these things. Change in existing zoning regulation that will have the effect of allowing more residential development and will apply uniformly to each parcel in at least one district. So that's what we would call a proposed comprehensive zoning change. Another thing that would qualify would be a city proposal to adopt a new zoning code and/or zoning map that will apply to the entire city. So as, as you know, we're gearing up to do a proposed comprehensive zoning change under number two. And the last thing that would qualify would be a city proposal to adopt a zoning overlap or overlay district that will have the effect of allowing more residential development than previously and will include an area along a major roadway, highway or transit corridor. And you'll see here, the legislature is making adjustments in the law for allowing more residential development, denser residential development. And that's, you know, buckle in and get used to it because that's not going away. And right now, because we are under 150,000 population, we don't get some of the more severe of the new changes. But they're, my crystal ball, I would say that those changes are going to be coming our way even before we reach 150. I think the legislature is just kind of implementing it a little at a time.
Can I comment on, or opine on that briefly?
Yes.
So that was one item that we were watching really closely with the legislature, particularly in my meetings with the mayors from Rockwall County. Rockwall County, as you know, has many large tracts of land that are undeveloped. And speaking to the mayors over there, there is a desire by the residents and city leadership. In fact, some city leaders campaigned on no multifamily development, no load, no high density development, none of that, right? They want these one acre lots, big tracts of land for people to enjoy their home and their, their property. And it's clear that what's coming from the state is in stark contrast to that. The state is very focused on more density, bringing down the cost of home values, or not home values, but bringing down the cost of homeownership so that people can afford to be in homes. And right now, as Victoria said, it's, we're bracketed out of that, being that our city's only about 70,000 residents. It's 150,000 or greater. So it really right now is only impacting the bigger metro areas or bigger cities. But once that first domino falls, that the legislature makes a change like that, it is far easier to come back in a future legislative session and then change that bracket. Because now it's not this massive legislation about changing density requirements. It's simply a minor adjustment in terms of the brackets. And so as a city and as city leaders, we have to maintain a close eye on that. We have a legislative affairs subcommittee with the council that watches this stuff. But it's something that's going to be coming, and Rockwall County is fiercely against it. I think we have members of our community that are fiercely against it. But at the end of the day, the legislature is forcing this upon us in a lot of ways, pushing this upon us that they want denser subdivisions, denser areas, the addition of things like multifamily. And that's, that's what's staring us in the face right now. So that's very much an opinion on my part, just based on what I've seen from our legislature and what I've heard. Mr. Cote?
Yeah, and I think one of the other driving forces of that is the fact that we're losing agricultural land. So the whole point is, if you're allowing your population to spread out and you can't grow food anywhere, how are you going to feed that population? So they're really, I think, trying to force more dense areas to try to save that for agriculture.
Plus, how are you going to provide all the additional water?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
So isn't it up to the planning and zoning committee to say if someone wants to come in with that property, even though the state can say, well, high density, is it still proactive for the planning and zoning to say, that piece of property, we don't want that to go there or?
So, so what the state can do is preempt local regulation and make it so that we no longer have a choice. That's what can happen. The, we are disallowed from disapproving a certain zoning regulation. Is that accurate statement, Victoria?
It is, and, and we're not there yet.
We're not, correct, just to be clear. We're still bracketed out of this.
Well, it's true that you could, we could still not say, you can't disallow for high density. But the same way you used the example of the daycare, turning, turning lanes or any other issues with traffic or anything else, if you're disapproving with that building or that establishment there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer for those specifics.
Yeah, I, I think right now the legislature is looking at a, a more high level than getting down in those kind of weeds for, for cities. They're, I think everybody's kind of hit all the high points. They're really trying to make homeownership more affordable, trying to preserve agricultural land and really push higher density residential, you know, to, and, and I'll just say, in every planning and zoning city attorney workshop that we've been to, you know, we, we hear a lot of like urban planners and, and that's all they talk about, is that it, it's coming. They're, you know, say goodbye to estate lots, you know, there's, that higher density is what is going to happen in the future. And, and our legislature makes it seem like that is, that they, they are in agreement. But anyway, any other questions?
No, let's, let's continue.
Okay. So, so the proposed comprehensive zoning change, why is that important for us? Because we are bracketed out. It's, it's important because of the notice. The notice required for a proposed comprehensive zoning change is very simple. You just publish it in the newspaper 15 days before the date of the public hearing, and you have to publish it on the city's website. You don't have to send notices to people in a 200-foot radius or anything else. The only notices you do have to mail are to owners of properties that if that zoning is granted, that rezoning is granted, they would become legally non-conforming. You, and you have to send them a notice and it has to have this specific language that's in the statute.
That's another reason for that goal of minimizing legal non-conformities through the process.
And, and I'll say, it's sort of like, if you guys are familiar, like with the, the language we have to use to pass the tax rate, how it doesn't really sometimes bear a lot of resemblance to what our rate really is doing. That language in the statute about the non-conformancy is pretty much the same. When the property owner gets that, they're, it makes it sound like they're not going to be able to use their property like they're using it. So we, we always put a, a number there for them to call with questions and.
Chris Olson?
They'll find it.
So they're saying that we don't have to notify people within those zones, the 200-foot and the 500-foot anymore?
Well, for a proposed comprehensive zoning change, because a proposed comprehensive zoning change is so huge.
So, I'm sorry, just so I can understand this. So as an example, so if I own a home, a single-family home in an area that gets this comprehensive change for multifamily, I'll get a notice that says I'm legally non-conforming in my home?
If, if single-family, like if you're SF 10 and SF 10 is not going to be allowed there anymore in what's being proposed, yes, you would get that, that notice that says if this passes, you'll be legal non-conforming. You'll still be able to use it like that.
Yeah.
But it'll be legal non-conforming.
But in the case where we're, we're changing like from SF 5, 6, 7, 9 to R 1, which included all those, then you would be legally conforming.
Sure.
So, you know, we're not going to send you that you'll notice. We're just going to tell you on the website and then the newspaper that we just changed the name of it.
Discondisced.
And then does that mean that if, when it gets changed, that multifamily can build by right? Because there's been a comprehensive change in the zoning?
It, it would depend on what the zoning is changed to.
Got it, got it, okay, all right, it's different, okay, all right. I was combining those two things, okay, thank you, that, that makes it clear for me, thank you.
All right. Notice requirements for other proposed zoning changes, not the proposed comprehensive zoning change, but any others, okay? And that's before the 15th day before the date of the hearing. They, you have to publish it in the newspaper and on the city's official website and also mail to property owners within 200-foot radius. And again, to property owners whose properties would become legal non-conforming, if there are any. So it's, the difference is that when it's not a comprehensive change, they, we have these individual notices that get mailed out in the 200-foot radius. And, and our city does a 500-foot, that's just a courtesy, but that, those people in the 500, well, from 200 to 500 are not counted in the protest calculation. For proposed zoning change that does not apply to the whole city, the P and Z also now must post a notice sign, not later than the 10th day before the date of the P and Z hearing. And that sign has to remain posted on that property until after the council considers the matter. Now, the sign has to be at least 24 inches long by 48 inches wide. And I've heard a lot of city folks really upset about this because that's apparently some kind of weird size that now everybody's having to get custom made. It must.
It is a lot of size.
It must be located on the property that's affected by the change or for a change that's initiated by the city that might affect multiple properties, it can be on a public right of way. And the sign must provide the date, time and place of the public hearings.
So, Mr. Hall, our, our signs currently are four by four, correct?
I have to look at staff, yes.
They're four by four, and they include a QR code, but you're saying that the sign actually has to list.
Has to be 24 by 48.
QR code is not sufficient, we can still have.
You can still have it. And actually, this, that last sentence that says the sign must provide date, time and place of the public hearing, that's just Victoria, because actually the statute doesn't say anything.
Okay.
About what the sign has to say.
So we're already compliant with this for what we're doing, okay.
But your 24, 44 foot and a 4 foot, isn't that what she said?
Yeah.
This is, exceeds the minimum.
So we're, we're, we're good.
Our current sign is.
Yeah.
Victoria, if you don't mind, can you go back to the previous slide? For the benefit of city council and the commission, Victoria and I had a conversation, Deborah and I had a conversation. Maybe go back to the other slide. We, when we put our notices in for our public hearings, we use Dallas Morning News because that's the local circular and that's what was adopted by the city, I think in February.
It's been designated, yeah.
Yeah, it is very expensive, extremely expensive. And I just say that to say, it's very expensive.
What is very expensive? 10 grand for a single?
One ad, I think, is about almost $500.
Oh, $500, okay.
Yeah.
I have, I have some other cities in Dallas County, and they use other papers that they have found because Dallas Morning News is so expensive.
So we don't have a local publication here in the city of Rowlett. What, perhaps a conversation for another day, my friend, what options we have, Debbie, if we could look into that.
Something gets thrown on my sidewalk every shot.
That's, that's, that's junk.
That's advertisement, that's what you're trying to do.
I just wanted to bring that point up because you may be hearing that item in the future that I'll discuss.
And you can also designate more than one official paper, actually. Okay, and the last thing about the sign, the P and Z actually can elect to require the applicant to provide, maintain and pay for the sign.
So that's what we do now.
That is what, I thought it was, yeah, yeah.
So protest procedures. First of all, there is no protest procedure for a proposed comprehensive zoning change. No, no, you, no protest. I mean, you can still come up and have public comments, you can still email your council or P and Z commissioners, but there's no formal protest procedure. For other zoning changes, it has to be in writing. It has to be signed by the owners of, and there's three options here. I can only fit two on the slide. At least 20% of the area of lots or land that are covered by the proposed change. Usually when we get a rezoning request, it is by the property owner. But sometimes there'll be a larger area and it will include folks that don't necessarily want that change. So in that case, those 20% that were going to be covered by the change could, could amount to a protest. The, another is, except as provided in three, which I'll get to in a minute, at least 20% of the area of the lots or land that are within the 200-foot radius. And then another way to get the protest is 60%, at least 60% of the lots are land within the 200-foot radius if the proposed change has the effect of allowing more residential development and doesn't have the effect of allowing additional commercial or industrial uses, unless the additional commercial or industrial are on the first floor of the residential development and they don't exceed 35, 35% of the overall development. So here again, you can clearly see that the legislature is favoring that more dense residential development because to, to successfully lodge a protest, if it's going to have the effect of allowing more residential development and doesn't allow more commercial or industrial, it will take 60% of the owners of those properties in the 200-foot radius in order to, to trigger super majority. And more on that in just a second. So in computing the percentages of the land, the new law makes clear that the area of the streets and alleys are included in, in calculating the percentages. And the land area is not calculated individually or by tract, but in the aggregate for all of the land that's subject to the change. Now here's the, the part that's really interesting. For the first two changes, you know, 20% of the owners of the actual land that's subject to the change or 20% if it doesn't fall in category three. In other words, doesn't make it more dense residentially. If you get that 20%, then in order for the zoning to take effect, the proposed zoning change must receive the affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all the members of the council. So it's triggers your super majority. And that's kind of what we've all been accustomed to, right? But if it's in number three, where we had to get 60%, then, and that in order to take effect, it only has to receive the affirmative vote of a majority of all the members of the governing body. So that would be four of you, would, would be all that had to vote for it. So it's, in other words.
So the protest has almost zero effect.
It, it, it really does. And that's, I, I hesitate to say that, but it, it really does. It makes it almost impossible to have any effect.
Do, do you know if that, is that language specific a majority of all members of the governing body? In other words, it's four sevens, even if there's only five people at a meeting?
Yes, that's right.
So it, it does add a slightly higher.
Yeah, it is, it is a little, it's a little different than what, you know, just on the gravity. And there is a, a zoning change that has the effect of making residential development less restrictive. In other words, you're not being as restrictive about what can be developed, so it can be more dense. Than the previous regulation, it's conclusively presumed valid and to have occurred in accordance with all applicable statutes and ordinances if somebody doesn't move to annul or invalidate it by the 60th day after it's approved. So basically, after that 60th day, it's presumed valid. And that's a big hurdle to overcome if anybody wants to challenge it. So anybody that, you know, whether it's the developer that didn't like the decision or the adjacent landowners that don't like the decision, now if it's falls within that category three, basically, they've got 60 days. And after that, they're going to be looking at a presumption of validity. And I threw this one in here, although I, I really think it's kind of useless. But the, they have, the legislature has taken a step in the direction of allowing electronic notice. So the city can establish an online portal where people can sign up to receive their notices electronically.
Which we have.
We still have to require the, you know, of, an acknowledgement that they actually got it. And if they don't acknowledge the receipt, then we're required by law to still deliver it in time by any of the other approved methods. So in my opinion, we, you know, we can't wait on that. So in my opinion, we, you know, we can't wait on them to see if we've gotten their read receipt. Yeah, so it's kind of useless, but it's a step in that direction. I think that's it.
That's a nice thought, but I think we err on the side of caution.
Yes, I agree.
Nailing notices. Counsel or commission, any questions from Mr. Thomas?
I do have one real quick. Going back to plat and replat. So if a plat meets the state requirements, the minimal state requirements, it's a ministerial function we have to approve. It's replat requested by the same owner that had the plat. Is it required because whatever engineering things are required that we have to approve?
Yes, if it meets all of our local regulations, what they're proposing on their replat meets all our regulations, it's just a ministerial function, even replat.
Oh, okay.
Interestingly, Victoria, our code requires that a replat be noticed.
Yeah, the state law requires that it be noticed and that you have a public hearing.
Okay.
I don't know why, but it does.
But it's still ministerial approval.
All right, any other questions? Commissioners, thank you so much, not only for being here tonight, this is probably your third meeting this month, but also for your service on the commission, we appreciate you greatly. It's a thankless job, and there might be times where you get yelled at by members of the public, but we are grateful for you all and grateful for the time and effort that you put into doing your job really well. If you have any questions for us, you can find our emails, of course, on the city's website. Feel free to give us a call, we're always available, be glad to hear from you. Be glad also to hear about your opinion on various cases that you've heard. So if you have comments that you want to share with us, you can do that individually with each of us. We'd be glad to hear what you have to say, if there's any addition to what you share on the recording or anything like that. Counsel, any other comments for our commissioners?
We appreciate your efforts as well.
All right, Mr. Cote, I'll let you adjourn.
Well, with that, the planning and zoning commission is adjourned.
All right, the city council is adjourned at 8:22 PM. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.